Good evening. Thank you all for coming. It looks like we've got some great conversations happening at our tables, but I hate to interrupt that, but I want to be mindful of your time and at least get going. And I'll be here as long as the school will let us stay. But anyway, first of all, I'd like to say welcome, thank you for coming. I'm Robert Bender, County Commissioner for District 4, Escambia County. This is my first town hall that I've held. I've done some joint meetings and attended with some city council members, but this is the first one I've held on my own out in this part of the district. So, thank you for coming. There are some people I would like to recognize at first. Not knowing how long they're going to be here, I would like to recognize the Ferry Pass Fire Department, and we have some other members of Escambia County EMS with us tonight. They are the... I did ask them to come so that they could be recognized for all the hard work that they do in this area. They are probably the busiest fire station that we have in Escambia County, and they're right here in our backyard. So, I wanted to recognize them and thank them for their hard work and all that they do. There are also some other elected officials here tonight. We have Scott Lunsford in the back, our tax collector. We have Dale Perkins, our ECUA Board Representative. We have our new county administrator, Janice Gilli, is here.[124.89][124.89](APPLAUSE). There she is, right there. Janice served as a county commissioner in the early 2000's. She came to us from University of West Florida where she did government relations. She spent a lot of time in Tallahassee, working with Jerry Magarden, and also for the governor and the Speaker of the House. So, we are glad to have her onboard. I've appreciated working with her the last two and a half months and look forward to all the things that she has planned for us over the next few years. It's been a daunting task coming in. She's done a great job, and we're already starting to see the fruit of her labor. And so, I just want to say, Janice, thank you for coming tonight. She has been instrumental in helping address a lot of the concerns that we've heard from citizens. And then, I just want to make sure that I'm not missing any other elected official. I know Patty Hightower's going to come in a little bit later. She's scheduled to come in a little bit later and give an update on the superintendent search. And I'll also let Dale come up with the ECUA when they have some time here. And then, also, I want to thank all the staff for here. Most of them are standing in the back, and we have a few more over here. Again, they're the ones that complete everything and get the credit. I think we've got great staff in Escambia County, and I look forward to working with them. I've gotten to know a lot of them already. And so, it's... I'd say the biggest thing is, is we just have to know what we need to do. We can't be everywhere and know everything. So, the comments that you give to us, either tonight or through my email address, district4@myescambia, or through our offices, is how we get a lot of our direction and able to act quickly on it. With that being said, the last person I want to introduce is my aide, Angela Crowley. She's in the back by the door. A lot of you have already...[263.83][263.83](APPLAUSE). A lot of you have already known Angela. She's been with the county for, I think, 27 years now, and has definitely been able to help me get acclimated into the county, but also is probably the best person at answering your questions and getting your requests done. One other thing I'd like to recognize is, I'm aware of at least two Neighborhood Watch Associations that we have here tonight. We have the Ferry Pass Neighborhood Watch with Bonnie Wooton, and also the Diamond View.[302.64][302.64](APPLAUSE). And I think you were recognized as the best Neighborhood Watch in Escambia County?
Community Advocate Volunteer of the Year.
Community Advocate Volunteer of the Year. So, you came down, and we gave a proclamation and recognized you for all your hard work. So, two people that are helping make a difference in our community, and I know a number of neighbors are involved in that. And so, thank you both for making this area better. So, this is a little bit about you. We do have a schedule that we'd at least like to recognize or follow, because there's some bigger areas that we want to touch on, and then we can drill down into some of your comments that you'd like to discuss tonight. And then, lastly, I did see Sheriff Morgan just walk in, so I'd like to recognize him. Thank you for coming, Sheriff.[354.06][354.06](APPLAUSE). And so, at first, I'd just like to say, it's been a real honor, these last 10 months, being able to serve the community. We've had a lot going on, and we're hitting our stride now. You never know what's coming. I said that the toughest thing that I've gotten accustomed to is how slowly things move. And someone who previously worked at the Pentagon said that it helps prevent bad things from happening quickly, but it also helps prevent good things from happening quickly. And we try to move things along as quickly as we can, but there is a process, and we need to follow that. And then, I'd say, the second thing was seeing your day recapped on the 6 o'clock news. Usually, when someone leaves your business, it's not reported on, and so, it was getting accustomed to that a little bit. But, other than that, I think we've... As I said, Janice has come onboard, and we're headed in the right direction now, and I'd be happy to address any of those issues with you. But, first, I know one thing that's probably near and dear to everyone's heart is the Olive Road construction. I drove through there just before this meeting. They were laying some asphalt. We've recently completed the reconnecting of Johnson to Olive with a new traffic signal that went live, I think, about a month ago. And so, we still have roughly about another year left on the project. And so, I appreciate everyone's patience as we've done this. It is a large project for us, and also, with the way that it's funded, is that we're not able to fund the whole thing. And I know when I was here, when Grover last held one of these, was the joke was, they'll finish the three-mile bridge before they finish the Olive Road. Again, that has a lot to do with FDOT being able to fund it and give them extra money to work during the night and things like that. So, anyway, Scott, do you mind coming up and just giving a few little remarks about what's going on with Olive Road right now and what we see happening over the next year? Ladies and gentlemen, this is Scott Saunders. He's our engineer and is overseeing the Olive Road project. Thank you for coming, Scott.
Thank you for having me.[504.81][504.81](APPLAUSE). So, again, we do appreciate your patience on Olive. It was a pretty long process, and there was a lot of things that took place. Commissioner mentioned that we're actually laying asphalt right now on Olive. That's the final lift, so that'll continue over the course of the next week. Still have a lot of large pipes that are going to be going in, some widening, sidewalks, curb. Those kind of things will be taking place over the course of the next year. So, we'll be finishing this project out. It'll begin to feel more complete, obviously, as we move forward. We've got the intersection open, the signal's working. They're also doing the paving on Johnson. So, again, it'll start to feel more complete and get to feel like we're closer to the end, but you will see some road crossings. You'll see some large pipes going in, and, like I say, sidewalk, curb, those kind of things. And then, obviously, as we get towards the end, we'll be doing some final grading and siding and seating. So, you know, barring weather delays, we're looking at the end of next summer being 100%.
And then, I'd just say, are there any questions about Olive Road, or we can come back to it if you'd like not to ask right now? Yes, ma'am?
I'd really like to see more control of traffic on Olive Road. People are using that middle lane as a passing lane. And it's especially bad nowadays, when elementary school is dropping off, and they're coming out on Olive Road. Just need some more traffic watch.
So, the comment was, was that we've heard that motorists are using the turn lane as a passing lane. We've... I believe the sheriff has done a little bit of enforcement there. We also heard, especially even going around school buses. So, I've talked to the school district...
(INAUDIBLE) around the E-Cap buses.
And the E-Cap buses. The school buses have cameras on them, so that helps if there's a time that you see it happen. You can at least let us know, and usually, there's a frequency... People typically do it. If they do it once, they're probably going to do it again. So, that helps us narrow maybe the time that we need to be out enforcing. That's a lot what they do with the speed trailers, is that when you see a speed trailer, they'll... When you see it move, definitely start paying attention to your speed, because that means they've downloaded the data, and they're checking to see at what time they need to be there to catch all the speeders. And so, the speeding trailer's good to see. It's when you don't see it that you need to really be paying attention. But, yes, we'll continue to work with the school district and the sheriff's department on enforcing, not having people use the turn lane for a passing lane.
(INAUDIBLE) camera that's on the light there? I know that's related to y'all over at Park Place watching traffic and all that?
Yes.
Is there any other uses for that?
So, we currently... I don't believe we are... I don't know if we're allowed, but we don't use it in terms of investigations or people to come see it. It is a... It is used for... To allow us to use the light and work the light and monitor it.
Is there any 5G connection or any?
I'm not as familiar with that, and it's the light at...
There's a light on the camera? I mean, a camera on the light. As you're turning, you can look up, it's on the bar that goes across. There's just been, you know, the rumor floating that those are 5G2-related, so...
And where... What intersection?
Right there, where you turn off of Olive onto Johnson, the new realignment.
Okay. I believe that we... Are we... So, part of that is, is that we are... FDOT has committed $40 million over the next few years that all of our lights will start to have that technology.
Okay.
And what that does is, that allows us to control remotely the light. It allows us to check on traffic conditions, if there's... If we need to flush one thing, and actually, that's a good segue into the next item, is the Traffic Signal Operations Center. Because, as many of you know, the traffic on Davis Highway, when we are able to connect into that, view it in real-time, and monitor, and make changes, that's where we'll really be able to see the improvement.
Okay.
And so, I know we are headed that way, so there's probably some technology associated with that. I don't know if it's active yet, though.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Sure.
Hey, are we still going to have the drainage down Boyd, where it's flooded, down at Boyd and rains? Is it still slated?
Is that... And this is Wes Moreno. Thank you, Wes.
Yes, we are Phase 5 of the Olive Road project, and once we finish this phase we're on now, that'll be our next phase. That'll be coming up.
Wes, do you know about what phase we're on now? Is this... Is this... We're on two right now, so a little ways to go. So, the Traffic Signal Operations Center, like I said, it was a good segue into this. FDOT is... Has put $40 million behind this project, and what it will allow us to do is, like I said, remotely control the lights throughout Escambia County. And as I say, I'm one that if I go through a light and then have to stop a half a block later at another light, we need to have better communication and signalization there. It will allow us to do that. If there's... We've had it in place on Pensacola Beach since March, I believe, of 2018, and it allows us to do more accurate car counts. It allows us to do live remote feed-ins, and then we can make changes. Another one that we highlighted recently was right at the interstate at I-10 and Scenic Highway. The same thing. So, as traffic gets congested in the mornings, if we need to let the light stay green a little bit longer so that cars coming south on Scenic at around 8 o'clock need to move a little bit further, we can do that. And that's what the technology allows. And we've also had the opportunity to monitor and see how long it takes you to get from one spot to another, and that just really helps with our traffic data and knowing traffic patterns and things like that. We also have the Community Redevelopment Agency. The Atwood CRA has now been active, I think, for a couple of years. We're starting to build the reserve, and we'll be able to do some things with that. We do have someone from the CRA with us tonight, if she just wants to come up and say a few words about the Atwood District.
I'm Clara Long, and I'm the Community Redevelopment Agency Division Manager. And I also have with me Megan Polk, who is the Project Manager for this Atwood District. Again, yeah, Atwood has been... It was adopted in 2016, and we amended the boundaries in 2018 to add just probably less than acre or two onto the property, but it's growing. I mean, only development we've done so far with the tax increment finance from the CRA TIF was, we put in some gateway signage, and we did some street lighting, about 320 lights in the Atwood CRA. We've done some minor home improvements with our grant program, and we've also done some neighborhood cleanups in the CRA. So, as the funds grow in this particular area, we'll be able to do more.
Okay. You're welcome.
Thank you. I know also, a lot of you are active with code enforcement. We do have code enforcement here tonight. We have... Our office has continued to accept the anonymous complaints, as my predecessor did. Again, I don't think it's how we get the information. It's either they're in violation or not, and we need to address it. I know that as things come up, we pass those along, and they get taken care of. One of the things that we've been working on lately is the building at Davis and Copter. When we realized that there was a safety there, Tim Tolbert, our building inspector, instructed Gulf Power to disconnect the power, and they've started the process. I think there was a magistrate hearing scheduled for October 1st, and then, at that point, we get a little tied down by what the judge... How much time the judge allows the property owner to do the abatement himself before we can get involved. Once that... If the homeowner or property owner doesn't do anything, then we have to bid out the project and then have it demolished. Probably, we're looking at best-case scenario, or latest should be mid-November Thanksgiving before it's taken care of. But, I know we are working on that. There are, again, just calls that come in weekly that Angela handles and reaches out to code enforcement. Do you want to come down and just say a few words? I know he's been very involved in the community, a lot of you. He says he attends a lot of the community meetings. And so, again, I was able to do a ride-along with code enforcement earlier this year. It is... I will say, it is not an easy job. It is somewhat dependent on the property owner answering the door, that if they can't make contact, then it slows the process down. And the thing is, is that if you're willing to work with us, we'll work with you. It's... We understand that you have other things going on, but at the same time, you're impacting your neighbors, and that's what we're trying to resolve. So, Sergeant, thank you for coming.
Yes, sir. A pleasure. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. Welcome, Ferry Pass. I appreciate being here at the town hall meeting. And keep in mind that I am available to do your local community or Neighborhood Watch meetings as well, that we can go more in-depth and thorough as to our procedure, policies, and how we go about resolving those issues for the citizens of Escambia County. As he mentioned, the Copter Road property is underway to getting addressed as soon as possible. We will get that taken care of. There are other properties and other concern that you have. I have business cards that I pass out to a lot of you. If any of you need some and don't have any and need to talk with me, you're always welcome to, at any time regarding that. If you can't read me, leave a message, and I'll get back to you right away to help you to address any concern that you have. We are here to assist the citizens of Escambia County as a partnership to make sure we improve everything for you, for the citizens. So, I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Any questions, concerns?
Does my building... That building... Mine directly...
It does, absolutely. It does fall on the owner, which is one of the reasons we'll expedite that process, to get the owner involved. If not, the county does have the means to address that and get it taken care of. Any other questions?
Today, I heard that Gilbert is...
Yes.
...in our area today.
Okay.
The thing is, we have some weaknesses that allows... It allows too much of a slide room. Okay? You're supposed to keep your yard clean, shouldn't contribute to rats, possums, yada-yada. Well, when they blow stuff up along the bottom of the fence, and rats create tunnels in it and all that, and they can have overgrowth, which is called not overgrowth no more, but it's a foliage between two yards, even though we have two fences. It's a rat and a possum contributor, but he's within boundaries. What do we do?
Well, you know, that... I'm going to want to look into that myself to see exactly what's going on with that. So, if you don't have my information, do I give you a card?
I guess so.
We could schedule a meeting, and we'll take a look at that for you, and we'll see where we are regarding that. So, yeah, there are some areas with the code that we don't have enforcement authority and things like that, but nuisance concerns that I think you're talking about, there should be something we could address there. But if not, we'll be sure to let you know. But I want to be able to see that with you, if that's okay.
And both of the gentlemen were very nice, but they're within their boundaries, and what can you do?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Anyone else? Well, again, I am available for your community meetings. Be a pleasure to come and talk with you guys, more in-depth, more thorough, a lot of examples, a lot of exhibits of things that we show and the improvements that we do for the citizens of Escambia County. So, by all means, you're always... I'm always obliged and privileged to come and see your meetings, so please, don't hesitate to contact our department and myself personally. Thank you.[1348.41][1348.41](APPLAUSE).
And again, just to talk about the property at Davis and Copter, there is just a little bit of due process involved, and as much as we would like to... You know, we can see the concern and the potential safety hazard, but it's still private property, and we have to respect that and follow our own rules and guidelines. So, next is Development Services. There's a... I know there've been a few items. One, there's a... That we've heard about lately. One is the Dollar General that's going in on Scenic Highway between the GE entrance and the interstate. When I saw this, I started asking questions. They were not required to give any notice to the neighborhood, because it was already zoned commercial, but we did ask that some... We looked at what we had available to us in our resources. We tried looking at the scenic overlay, and didn't have much there. We did just ask them what type of improvements they could make to it, and between the pre-application and the application process, they made about $15,000 in improvements to make the exterior look a little bit nicer. I think they provided an awning. And so, we hear the concerns. They're... But from everything I was told, there was little we could do about preventing the Dollar General from going in. Again, it was... I understand the neighborhood complaints and the concerns. Yes, ma'am?
Are you going to be traffic flow, which is so close to the interstate? I mean, people pull easily into the parking lot, and...
So, the question's about the traffic flow. It is... It's on the north side of North Point Drive, so you have the convenience store, the road, you have the old gas station, and then you have this property location, which was the old doctor's office. So, it is a good bit from the interstate, but that whole area between GE to the interstate is zoned commercial. But with us... Excuse me. With us tonight, we have Horace, is our Development Director. And again, he helps us and walks us through the process, but he's also here to help you guys. It's not just... Again, we're not looking to just place barriers. We're trying to make everybody a better neighbor and make sure that you fall within the code. So, Horace, you want to just come up and say a few words? Actually, there is another property that I know people have been asking about. It was the former Hookah Lounge.
Yes.
And there is a brewery going in on-site that will have consumption. So, I misspoke at an earlier meeting, based on some information I had, that they did change their... I guess they updated their application to reflect that there would be some consumption on-site, and there was a paper... An article in the paper about the facility coming in. But, Horace, if you just want to say a few words about the Development Services and maybe some of the things that we have going on right now?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you for being... Thank you for being here. Glad to be here. Yes, basically, when you think of Development Services, think of planning and zoning. I'm the one that basically let people know what they can and cannot do with their property according to the Land Development Code. According to the Land Development Code. Let me say it again. According to the Land Development Code and the comprehensive plan. Yes, the Hookah Lounge, that was a very, very big issue, but they did receive all of the necessary county's approval. Mr. Andrew Holmer, who's standing way back there...[1605.16][1605.16](LAUGHING). He's over the Board of Adjustments, and he's the one that worked hand-in-hand with trying to making sure these things comply. It went before the BOA. The BOA did grant all of the approvals. It went before the site plan review, so it was granting all of the approvals per the Land Development Code. So, we try to do our level best, but try to let them know the hiccups, but if it's meet the standards, my code and my legal department say I got to approve of it, regardless of if I may not like it, I still got to approve of it. So, if there's any questions you may have, please contact me, 554-8210. I'm here to help you anytime.
Thank you, Horace. And I...[1661.41][1661.41](APPLAUSE). Again, I think what it takes is that if you get a card in the mail saying that there's something that's being heard, and you're within that radius, show up to the hearing. Showing up to the hearing is the only way to get your voice heard, because by the time it gets to the county commissioners, if you didn't speak at the hearing, you can't introduce any new information. So, again, it's... That's why we require the notification to go out, that they know... You know, to notify the neighbors within a certain radius of what's being proposed and giving them an opportunity to give feedback. Yes, sir?
I have a question for Horace. So, what proximity is that within that particular property that those notifications go out would be the first question? The second question would be, there was a property on Johnson Avenue that asked to be rezoned next to the fire station recently, and there was no sign up there that it was being redeveloped or rezoned. I happened to read it in the paper and called one of the departments, and then a sign appeared. So, my question is, what requirements for putting those signs up so that for those of us who don't live within that, however many feet of that property, are aware that there's going to be a hearing for that particular property? Because I probably... You know, I'm in Bell Metal subdivision, so I'm six blocks down the road, and I'm probably not close enough, but still, it affects me because it can add traffic to Johnson Avenue, which doesn't need more traffic and that sort of thing. So, I'm just wondering... I mean, to me, the important question is, when do those signs go up every time that there's a rezoning, so we all know, even though we don't live that close? Or is it only because I called, that's why the sign went up?
Yeah, I can handle that. Drew Holmer with Development Services. For rezonings, we have a 15-day period there that we have to put a sign out. Excuse me. We put the signs out, we take a photograph. We don't always get our signs back. We put the signs out, we take a photograph, we don't always get our signs back. Sometimes they end up in the bushes or whatnot.
They don't always stay up even.
We have, we have to put them out fifteen, at least fifteen days prior to the hearing. We also, in this area, since we're south of Nine Mile, we send those notice postcards to everybody within five hundred feet, that owns property within five hundred feet per the property appraisers database, and run an ad in the paper.
And also too, there, there is a potential rezoning case. Do not call his office at Wood. That case is gonna be coming very, very soon. The rezoning process is very, very quasi-judicial, so we gotta go before the board and we got to the planning board, and then it gotta come before his office. So, when you see if that comes, it was pulled from the agenda. The applicant decided to pull it from the agenda, because the staff had some problems with it as well. So, if it comes back up, and if you see the notification in the paper, those that live on Atwood and those that do not, I strongly suggest that you come to the planning board meeting. How many of y'all know about that case? Heard about that one?
Are you talking about the Atwood way down there where the tour bus company is looking at that piece of property?
Absolutely, yes.
Well, I had some people at my last meeting that were concerned, very concerned about that, and I actually went over to the property to look, and the sign, it was kinda rigged. I mean, it was like paper taped on a sign and the rain had destroyed it and I couldn't even read it, you know? But we are concerned about that property.
So, please contact me, again, because it's quasi-judicial, tell all of the neighbors that's concerned, just try to keep them out of the loop for now, but contact us.
Okay, well, I'd like to have your card. And the reason that we're concerned about it is the amount of traffic. You're talking about tour buses, you're talking about people coming to meet the tour buses on those, those streets that are always, already so busy.
Ma'am, this is gonna sound very awkward, but we know that very good possibility this is coming back through the rezoning process. The gentleman over here has to vote on that, so we can't really go into too many facts on that.
Okay. Lay it on.
Okay. And, and the other property that we were concerned about is there's a convenience store going in the old Five Flags Dance Studio area, which is very close to Davis Highway. It's right where Olive Road condenses going eastbound into one lane and expands into five lanes going west. I mean, it just seems, and I know, you know, when something's commercial, there's a lot of different commercial applications, but I'm just like, this lady's concerned about Scenic Highway. Right there, there's a curve where that Dollar General's going in, and you know, it just doesn't, they do traffic studies for putting a convenience store that close to Davis Highway?
Our traffic folks have to look at those as they come through development review. This one was quite difficult, to the point that there, I don't remember the exact particulars. It may be that there's just right in and right out, because you couldn't get a fuel truck to make a left out of there, heck, you couldn't get a car to make a left out of there very safely. I just don't, I'm not in the traffic department, but I know that they, they went over that quite a bit, and there were quite a few revisions with the applicant before reaching an acceptable conclusion.
Conclusion, okay, thank you.
Sure.
I got another question. We're really pulling out for the, what's the distance between the school? What's the parameters of putting up a brewery right here close to this school? I'm very concerned about that.
Okay. Our Land Development Code, when it comes to on-premise consumption of alcohol, it's a thousand-foot measurement. It's not a thousand-foot radius, however. It's from the front door of the establishment, along, you know, the nearest route of public conveyance, which in this case, you have to come all the way down to this street before you even get across, well, any kind of crossing, to the nearest point of the school grounds, and it was over a thousand, from that front door to there. That's the way it measures.
My question to you about zoning, MDR, what is the MDR zoning? Would you explain to me what does MDR mean? And all those trailer camper in that area where I live, I'd like to remove, I'll talk to the code enforcement a couple times, been there since a couple months, it's still there. They, nobody talked to them or moved them out, but that's in the zoning, MDR. MDR is a single-family residential?
Correct.
Correct.
Generally, when, when folks first think zoning, you're thinking uses, but for residential, when you're talking about residential districts, zoning doesn't just separate the uses, it separates the density allowed on there, as in, you know, very low-density residential, bigger lots, the higher density you go, that you get more units per acre, and this one's medium-density residential, but it is strictly a residential area. I would have to look into the particulars of that code enforcement action to be able to say exactly what the situation is.
And let us, let us get some information from you. Now, it could, they could've been grandfathered in. There's so many different things that we have to look at, partial Pacific. So, let us get back with you, or get with us, so we can take a look at the Pacific action and then see what's going on.
Yep.
Yes, so we will, we'll take a look at it and we'll see what the regulations are.
Thank you. Any other questions about Development Services? Yes, sir?
Commissioner, I don't know if there's anything you can do about it. I'm just curious whether you have any latitude controlling traffic on, like, Scenic Highway. What we're seeing is more and more of the GE giant trucks going down the road, they've got escorts, more and more semis, and it's not only taking a toll on the road, but in my opinion, it's taken a bit of a toll on the residential occupants along what is supposed to be a scenic corridor and with the overlay and all that. I'm just curious, do y'all have any latitude to do anything about that or not?
Can I add just one thing on the end of your question?
Yes, sir.
And I'm gonna add something.
That's fine.
On the weekends, although Westinghouse is, well, it's, used to be, I'm back from the old days when it was Westinghouse, but they close, but the light continues to work. So, Sunday morning, when you're getting ready to go to church, and like all good Baptists, we're just a little bit late, we have to sit there at that light. Just saying.
I had the opportunity to, to meet with GE and their new property manager, not property manager, but plant manager, and I'll definitely talk to them about that and see. I know they have a few other things that they're working on.
And they may have.
Yeah.
Or skeleton crew or something. Well, I don't know.
But there's not the traffic that you have Monday through Friday that, and I know that it did blink for a while.
Yes.
And so, and so, we'll ask them to revisit that. And then, I know we've got another add-on.
I'm just gonna go a little sideways, because I don't know if the Scenic Highway is part of your jurisdiction, but I wondered if there's been some thought to putting in dedicated left-hand turn lanes along the Scenic Highway. At Winding Lane and Scenic, about twice a month, we have big accidents, and I mean vans upside down in the ditches. I've had toddlers in my driveway while their mother is being taken care of because she was hit, and, you know, how many accidents do there need to be before something can be done? And I was just thinking dedicated left-hand turn lanes might be the least expensive way of creating safety at these sort of intermittent left-hand turns from Scenic.
So, this encompasses the whole question of that Scenic is a, is a state road.
State road, yeah.
That's not to say that we can't make the request. I've had the opportunity to get to know our FDOT representatives. We also serve on the, on the Transportation Planning Organization, and we can look at that. As far as actual restriction of traffic, I'm not aware of any, it doesn't mean that we can't look into it. I, I know that, based on my meeting that I had with the GE plant manager, they, they are looking to be a good neighbor, and, and so, if there are ways that they can do it, and of course, part of it may be the, the direction that the, that the load is going, and I know that if there are nautical people here, the GE ship, I know they've, that the Port of Pensacola and maybe even GE have spent some time trying to get that from docking at Port of Mobile into Port of Pensacola. I've seen it come in on at least two occasions, so that's probably contributed to a little bit of an increase or uptick in, in the, the number of units that are going to the, to the port, and, but we'll, we'll definitely work with, with GE and see if there's a better way to do it. Of course, given their location, they're, they are probably constrained by some routes, and that is also controlled by Department of Transportation, and so.
The escort service is very dangerous, because they will push people totally off the road, and they blink their lights and make noise all day long, from seven in the morning till no telling when. It's extremely dangerous.
And, and again, I've seen the difference between there's the deputy escort and then there're just the pilot escorts, and so, I don't know if, if you're referring to the pilot or the, or the deputy, but, again, we'll look into that and ask them to be mindful of, of that. That's the, the agenda that I have so far, but before we get into some citizen input, I would like, give the opportunity for our other public officials to come up and say a few words, and Sheriff Morgan, if you'd like to come up, but, okay, okay. Dale, I'm gonna hold off on you for a second, 'cause I know, I know Jim's got some other things, but Scott, would you like to come up and say anything?
Good evening. Thanks for giving us the opportunity to be here. I know I've been excited, I've been trying to attend as many of these town halls as I can with the different commissioners. It's great to see the citizens come out and have their concerns addressed. I will tell you that probably top three, your tax collector's office is probably in the top three in the state. We are really working efficiently. When I took office, we were getting probably three or four people busy all day just addressing phone calls, complaints, concerns, and now we have the same group addressing compliments and thank you cards, so we've been able to turn it around. I hope you've noticed, if you've been in our facilities, they're moving faster, the lines are moving quicker, so we're doing everything we can to speed up when you have to come into the office. We've been working very hard to put things online to keep you from having to come. You now can buy a business tax receipt to go in business, renew it, update it from home. Installment plans are available online, and we've got, I was in Orlando a couple weeks ago demonstrating to the state some in-house software we've written to be able to help more customers do business remotely, so we just keep focusing on trying to reduce your wait times, make it more convenient, and again, it's just an honor to be your tax collector, and I do appreciate all the things that the commission does for us and the work and the good help we get out of those. So, I'll be hanging around in the back if anybody has any questions. Thank you.
I will say that Scott's looking at trying to have us buy him a new building, that's probably a little bit why he's being extra-nice to me tonight, but, but no, again, I've spent some time downtown, and of course, people that I know that come out, ask them how their experience has been, and, again, the experiences I've had at the tax collector's office have all been, have all been positive, and so, Scott, thank you for all that you do for Escamia County. And again, before we get to ECWA, Ray Melton is here with the Fire Department. Our, our Fire Department is also about prevention, and, and so, I did wanna give, give him an opportunity to come talk about, a little bit about how the Fire Department can, can help with that, and, and also allow you to spread the word maybe to your neighbors that if, if they need some of our services, that they're available. So, Ray, come on up. Thank you for being here tonight. Yes, sir?
Thank you. Everybody knows what these are, right?
Yes, sir.
Does everybody have one and it works? Not just when you're cooking, they're not cooking timers, okay? I am Ray Melton, I am a fire and life safety educator for Escamia County Fire. My job is to educate from little bitty to way up there. So, anybody that will hear me, and the young lady with the other neighborhood watch group, I wanna come to your meeting. I do get a chance to speak with neighborhood watch groups, church groups, schools, and it's very important we get the message out. This program started in 2001, and we still get tons of people that do not know we have this program. Our guys go out here every day, they will install these at no cost to you. We have the regular smoke detector, and if you have gas appliances, fireplace, or whatever, we will install a carbon monoxide detector. They're great, okay? It's all about saving lives. We are coming up on the holiday season too quick, okay? And I'm gonna get out there and get this word out. If you need a smoke detector or know somebody that does, I have a sign-up form back here. Just put your name, address, and good contact number, and we will get it scheduled. Okay, we're doing a lot for this county. We have started fire extinguisher training. We also do, we're fixing to start the hands-only CPR, because every second counts, and EMS, as you know, is swamped. The Fire Department responds to tons of EMS calls. So, if we can get hands-only CPR going on somebody before first responders get there, you're making a difference. It works, it's proven, okay? We gotta do this. And also, we are, I was invited a little while back to a, a family night with the Escamia County Schools, and at this family night, we have a lot of residents in Escamia County that absolutely do not speak English, okay? Sure, we have things printed in Spanish and English, that's mostly what we deal with, right? I was blown away to know that we have many subcultures of Vietnamese, Chinese, Portuguese, Russian, and they have no idea what we're trying to present. I'm on, if I see an issue with safety, I'm gonna jump on it like a cat pouncing on a mouse. I take this stuff seriously. I wanna educate them. I don't want them to just hear something that they don't understand. So, I teamed up with the Escamia County School District, and, and working with them, I've been to their open houses for these people that do not speak English, and half the time, the children that can speak English cannot translate effective enough, okay? So, since then, Escamia County Fire Rescue has come up with some handouts for all different types of fire prevention, and we now have printouts in nine different languages. Nine different languages. So that, so that we can, we can educate every citizen in the county. We don't wanna leave anybody out, and if you don't have a smoke detector, know somebody that does not have a smoke detector, by all means, let us know. We want everyone to have at least one working smoke alarm, okay? And it's, it's a pleasure to be here tonight, and on behalf of these guys, you know, thank you for having us. These guys doing outstanding job, they are our frontline defense. I like to think I work hard, however, these guys put it in, and not only do they fight fires, they're out there doing my job too. I cannot do fire prevention without these guys over here. They are making it work. Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys. So with that said, I'll take any questions you have. Any concerns about fire safety? Yes? That's above my pay grade. I have no idea. I have not, ma'am. I have not. Thank you all.
I would say that we, I am pushing forward and have gotten my colleagues on board to help go ahead and start the training facility, and that is program dollars for next year. So we're looking forward to getting all of Escambia County Public Safety a new training facility that they can go out and practice on. So look forward to getting that done and giving them the opportunity to have training here. I do want to recognize Patty Hightower. She got it, she just came in, and I know that she would like to say a few words on some of the changes that are happening within the school district. I'd also like to go ahead and say thank you for letting us host this here tonight. And so thank you for coming.
I was so glad to be invited, and I apologize for my lateness, but every Monday night I play handbells, and I have a taskmaster for a director, so I had to be there. But yes, you know that the voters agreed to have the next superintendent been appointed superintendent. I'd like to make sure that all of you know that on our website, there is a survey that you can take to help us figure out what we're looking for in our next leader. We also have a timeline that will tell you kind of where we are in the process. Mr. Thomas, our present superintendent, does not leave office until November of 2020. So it's a long process that we have been afforded the opportunity to take this time to actually put some things together. We will be having a meeting on Friday, a workshop where the search team is coming in and will help us again with some of the things. We plan to have community events like this one where we gather the community together in each of our areas and give us some input. We will also have focus groups with business leaders, teachers, administrators. I want everyone to know that we value your input. This is the first time we've had this opportunity, and we want to make sure that we're looking for the person that you think would best lead our community. But if you have any questions afterwards, again, thank you so much for this opportunity. Go to the website, click on the survey, it'll take through four minutes. And I'm keeping live count of how many we've done. I can't give it to you right now because I played bells and my brain's gone. So, thank you.
Similar to Patty, when I was elected, I didn't realize that I would have the task and the opportunity to select a county administrator. So we did go through that, and hopefully you all are able to find a, as good of a superintendent as we have in our current county administrator. So with that, I would like to ask Janice to at least come up and let people see her and say a few words if she would, if she just wants to stand up.
I'll be back here after questions.
You're, that's fine. I understand, okay. So see, she's caring as well. But again, thank you for coming tonight, Janice, and again, look forward to working with you over the next few years and already excited about the work that you've done, so. And then with that, I'd like to invite the ECUA up. Dale, I'd warn you, the River Gardens is sitting right here, so that, I know they're looking for a little septic to sewer there. But thank you for coming.
Thank you. What a great commissioner, huh? It's nice, it's nice to have Commissioner Bender put this on. He, he's been a joy to work with. The commission in general has been a real, has been a real pleasure. It's not always been like that. Eight or nine years ago, ECUA and the commission was at odds, and it was difficult for everybody, and it wasn't in the best interest of the citizens. So it's nice to have a good commission and a good staff. ECUA's got a lot going on as well. We're hiring a new executive director this month. Our current executive director has been there 17 years. You probably haven't heard a whole lot about him. That's good in the utility business. You know, he's an engineer, he's very competent, good at finances, and has done a good job over 17 years. But like other people, he's ready to retire and move on, and it's a big decision for us. We're a policymaking board. We basically set policy, but if any of you have had to deal with ECUA, you know that you have to go through the staff on a lot of the nitty-gritty stuff and navigate that and get it done. If you're unhappy with that, you can always call me. 207-5826 is my personal cell phone number. It's Dale Perkins, 207-5826. And I'm always willing to help remedy any issues you have, day or night. Call me. I'm available by email on the website as well. We have, we have some challenges. I'm gonna keep it brief because I know dinner and everything, you know, and Mr. Roberts is gonna do a brief presentation on plastics. But we do have a lot going on. One of them is that the District Three people don't have a representative right now and haven't for about nine months, and that's, I'm kind of sad about that, especially while we're picking a new director. And if you know anybody in District Three who needs help with something, or needs help with issues, please have them call me. I'll be glad to help them in the meantime. But hopefully, we'll get a, we'll get a person appointed there pretty soon. We've got, we've got antiquated, we've got, like much of the nation, we've got an antiquated underground utility system. You know, we've been in existence a long, long time. They have dug out pipes, old water pipes, that were hollowed-out wood logs stuck together and coated with Creosote, and that was what they were running water through downtown. Now, we've upgraded a lot of that stuff, but there are still a lot of the old clay terracotta pipes that sewer goes through. You know, there are a lot of pressurized systems. For a long time, the, the systems that were put in and the lift stations and stuff weren't up to standards, and developers kind of got away with some stuff back in the day, and some shoddy work was put in. And so we've been pretty stringent about that, but we have to upgrade a lot of stuff. And utilities are expensive. Underground utilities are very expensive. Not only do you have the roads and the, you know, soil and everything to deal with, you have the actual pipe and the flow and hydraulic, so it's very, very expensive. So you may hear figures like, we're doing $10 million in sewer expansion this year, and everybody thinks, oh, good, my neighborhood's gonna get it. That's not a lot of pipe in the ground. I mean, it's expensive. So we do, we do a priority program where we try to focus on areas that might contaminate area surface waters, that might be a threat to public drinking water wells, or where the sewage from leaching septic tanks might be a threat to, to people. You know, kids playing around or anything like that. And I was glad to get some provisial language for River Gardens this year where we are doing the engineering work on a sewer expansion program in River Gardens. And that's been a long time coming. The construction will be next year. You know, once you get that first money spent, then that gets the ball rolling. So we've got that, we've got that going. Recycling is a big issue. The recycling market has crashed. China is not taking our recyclables. We've got this tariff war going on, and so, you know, if it wasn't for ECUA, the whole Gulf Coast around here would not be recycling right now. And the reason we're able to do that is when we structured our recycling agreements, we weren't trying to make profit and make a bunch of money. We're trying to cover our costs. And what happens is when we structured it so that when the cost of the recyclables goes down, you have to pay more to have them recyclable. That's our cost. When the cost goes up, you pay less, or we may even pay you, like we have in some instances when the recyclables were high. So we are recycling and continuing to recycle, but if we had not structured it like that, recycling wouldn't be going on, and we'd be, we'd be taking everything to the landfill and, you know, shortening the life of that landfill. Technology is a big issue. A lot of our technology's antiquated. We're currently in the process of updating all that technology, and we're gonna have an ECUA app, like Gulf Power has an app where you can see where the garbage trucks are, where there's a boil water notice, where we're working on sewage things. Now, Gulf Power's a lot bigger financial entity than ECUA is, you know, so it's gonna take, it's gonna take a little while, but we are phasing it. In a couple of years, we will have that app on your phone, where you'll have an ECUA app where everything will be, will be real-time. Rates are always a challenge. You know, we, we have, the world is just a lot more stringent on environmental regulations now, and clean water, and disposal of sewage, and effluent and everything, so we always strive to keep the rates low, but, you know, stuff goes up, insurance cost goes up, chemicals goes up, you know, we have, we have a lot of stuff we have to pay for. And so we, we try to keep the rates as low as possible, but sometimes we don't get an automatic, like when property values increase with the commission, we don't get an automatic adjustment. We have to do that. I'm gonna kind of wrap it up. Two other things. CDL drivers, you know anybody looking for a job? ECUA's always looking for CDL drivers. We've gotten, you know, where there's a shortage because of the booming economy of CDL drivers, where we'll train them ourselves. A lot of times, we'll train them, they'll know the routes, learn the routes and everything, but they have to deal with garbage and stuff where at other jobs, they can just drive a truck. And so...
We have the same need, Dale, so...
Yeah, they have them, too.
I'm gonna turn the mic off here.
So CDL drivers, we'll train them, they'll work for six months, and they'll take a better job somewhere else. But, but yeah, that's, that's a challenge. And then the one, one last thing I wanted to talk about was compost. If you haven't tried the ECUA Bloom compost, man, give that stuff a try. It is incredible. All the, all the shrubs and bushes and grass clippings and everything that used to go to the landfill, we now compost that. It makes the best compost in the world. You can grow anything in it. On the ECUA website, you can look up how to get it. It's dirt cheap, you know, and, and it's really good stuff. We've got bags over here to put, you know, they're free to put the garbage, I mean, the grass clippings and stuff, and we've also got these grease containers. Please tell people, and I know nobody in here does this, but don't pour grease down the drains. Do not pour grease down the drains. A lot of these sewage blockups and spills and stuff like that are caused by clogged drains from grease. Now, a good cook's got some grease, you know? If you're a good cook, you've got some grease, but put it in the garbage can or put it in those tubs right there, and we've got recycling stations all over where we recycle that grease, but please don't put it down the drains. And yes, briefly, take a question. It's still there. It's still there.
So you can still walk up and pick those up?
Yeah, yeah, we've got some, and drop them off, drop the full ones off, yeah. We've got a number of those on. I think on our website, it's got where those locations are, but I'm gonna give it to Jim Roberts. I don't want to take up too much time. He's gonna talk a little bit about recycling. Thank you.
Dale, before you leave, I do want to say, I've enjoyed working with you these last few months. For some of the people that are out there or maybe watching, we've been working together on Winding Lane, where we, we just repaved that as part of the Olive Road project, but we're working on that. Also with the Water Wheel, there's some issue there, and before we repave that street, we're gonna, we're gonna get that worked out. And so much like the ECUA, working with them, I've also been working with Santa Rosa County, City of Gulf Breeze. It is, we are, we are not an island. If we can all work together and, and again, we serve on a couple of boards together, but it's, it's more about what we can do for Escambia County in this area and not just focus solely on us. But that's what everyone in the rest of the room is here for, is to help what's going on right, right here in your, in your front yard or your backyard, so.
And just for a trivia question, I'll give a free grease joke that can anybody, that can tell me Ms. Gillies' maiden name, last name? Perkins. No relation, though, no relation.
All right. Thank you, Dale. And we do have Jim Roberts with the ECUA. There've been some, some changes very, very recently. I think this, he was saying this is probably his first event, public event that he's, he's able to talk about these. And so if we could just entertain him for a couple of minutes to allow him to, to make some announcements regarding those changes, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let me entertain you for a few minutes after Dale has covered the area pretty much so, but, you know, one thing that, I've been listening tonight about how important the neighborhood associations are, and, you know, I know Sheriff Morgan has already left, but without his guidance and David Craig setting up these neighborhood watch associations across our county, a lot of this would not happen. And so they really need a big hand for the participation they did to put these out. It gives us a great forum to be able to come talk to you about the changes that are not only at Escambia County, but at ECUA. And there are a lot of changes. And first of all, let me just say this, I don't know if you're familiar with TED Talks or not, but I had the pleasure of doing a TED Talk last year, and the theme was, recycling is in trouble, and it's probably your fault. It's not a guilt trip here, it's just the reality of the way it stands right now. Our contamination levels are really sky-high at the materials recycling facility. And that dictates basically our survival in terms of being able to provide this service to our community. Now, what has happened over the past couple of days, and thank you so much for allowing me to bring this to your attention. I'm not gonna get into it. I invite you to come up here and look at my, really, the display here. But traditionally, now, we've been doing recycling since 2009, January 2009, well, over 10 years now of doing this, and we've always done the plastics one through seven. Well, as of last week, that stopped. We're now doing plastics one through two. Three through sevens are just not economically feasible for us to do the program. This is not gonna mean anything detrimental to your service, but you just need to be aware of what you can and what you can't put in the can. It's real simple. So to kind of tag on to that, I've brought some really nice, convenient refrigerator magnets, nice polite way to remind you what you can and what you cannot recycle. But please, come look at the changes on the boards up here. It'll give you a better idea. I've also given you a scale of the plastics one through seven, what kind of outlines what the products actually are. With recycling in mind, it kind of tags on to that as well, Dale brought it up. Our composting program is amazing. Now, why do we do these programs such as recycling, or composting, or fats, oils, and grease? One basic reason, we lower your operational cost. We save you money. And that's what our mission is, to give you the best possible service, quality, but keeping the rates in check. Composting, if you take leaves, grass, branches, and you take it and you throw it to the landfills, $28.20 approximate, you can basically say, wait a minute, that can go to the composting program where we can then produce, we call it Jurassic Park material, nitrogen, phosphorus, potassium, three big things that make things grow like crazy. But the beauty of this program is, it eliminates the dependency of chemicals and fertilizers into the soil. We're on a very shallow sand and gravel aquifer right here. What you put into your grass goes into our water. So we're environmentally trying to get people in place to understand that and not put things into the soil that would really hurt our water quality. It's very simple. So it's all about the thought process. I appreciate your time so much to have me here, and I appreciate all of the neighborhood watches that allow me the time over the course of the year to come tell my story, because it is a good story. And Ferry Pass, I've been here, the last time actually I was at Ferry Pass here, we got locked in this building. The guy, the guard locked all the gates, and we couldn't get out of here, so I hope that doesn't happen tonight. And of course, you're wonderful from, from your association, and anybody has any need to have me come out and talk to you, I'm there, I'm at your disposal. Thank you for having me.
I would like to add one more thing to the agenda before we, we get to the open questions, and that's our animal control. I know that there's ongoing concerns in this area. They work hard to address them, but also, I want to recognize John for what he's done for animal control. It has changed drastically since he came on board, and, and so I'd really like just to give him the opportunity to come down and talk a little bit about that, and maybe debunk some of the myths, talk about the, the number of animals that, that we're taking in now than we were when he came on board, and, and just see how we're being proactive in that. I know that's very near and dear to a lot of people's hearts, so. John, thank you for, for being here this afternoon, this evening, and I'll, I'll give you a few, a few minutes if you don't mind.
You just want me to give it to a few minutes? I know how this works. Now, I'm used to being the opening act, not the headliner, so this is a little different. I just wanted to introduce myself. I'm John Robinson of Escambia County Animal Shelter and Control. We have, we have made a lot of changes at animal control. I know y'all have a lot of issues over in this area. There are things that we've worked on. One thing I want you to keep in mind is, just like when code enforcement was up here earlier and they were talking about people that don't open the door, those are the same challenges for animal control as well. It's really difficult to, to enforce something if you can't get the person to, to open the door, and we don't have the ability to kick them in. I mean, I can, I got the boots for it, but they just won't let us legally. But we do need your help with all those things. If you're overseeing one of the neighborhood watches, I'd love to come talk there. I know we have a lot of issues with stray dogs in this area, cats. made a lot of changes at the shelter over the last few years. And they're all for the better. When I got here, we were taking in over 14, almost 14,000 animals a year. Now, we take in about 6,500 animals a year. Our euthanasia rates drop every year and the amount of animals that are euthanized drop dramatically. We just did a, a big adoption event with PetSmart this weekend and adopted out 21 animals through that. And so, we're doing a lot of great things over there. The staff over there is amazing. We've got a great team over there and we're really proud of what they're doing and the same on the animal control side. So, I'm always happy to answer questions. I'm gonna hang out for a while and if you need anything from me, come find me.[1082.57][1082.57](APPLAUSE)
Thank you. And of course, I, I just wanna again thank staff for being here tonight. This is above and beyond for them. And, and again, it's so that we can get your concerns answered immediately and, and they can be aware of them. So, thank you to all the staff that, that is here today for coming in and, and being a part of this. With that, I would like to, to open it up to any other questions that haven't already been addressed and, and the topics that we've discussed. And yes, yes ma'am?
I just have a, actually I have a few, I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
One is a simple request. I'm not sure how, how to go about it. But right here on the street on Perazine, there's, well, you know, there's Ferry Pass Middle School. And when the kids come out of school, there's an intersection around Load Star and Perazine. There's a lot of overgrowth, actually up and down the, the street. And there's really not a place for the kids to walk. And there's a, a blind spot around a certain area. So, but if they, if the county just kind of cleaned up the sidewalks, they could, they could walk there. Well, no, it's clean. Like occasionally, one of the neighbors will mow it down, but it's not, nothing's, not something that they do all the time. So, therefore, it's a lot of times when the kids are coming out of school, they have no place to walk. And so, they'll walk into, in the street. And so, and it's not safe because it's really a huge blind spot on that area on Perazine. And if they could actually just mow that area down, just kind of keep it clean, keep it cut. I don't know if that's something that, how that happens, but...
I know we're, I learned a little bit about this yesterday afternoon. At the, I went to the dedication of the church, except it, it wasn't...
Yeah, it didn't happen yesterday.
It didn't happen yesterday, so...
Yeah, no, no, so sorry.
And so, they told about it. I, I know it used to be a private road and so, we're looking into that. And, but we did, we have asked to have someone come out and take a look at it and see what they can do about mowing that.
Okay. And the other question I wanted to know is that, because I've worked at a middle school and that, and I know that it doesn't take much for a kid to get off track. And so, with the brewery opening on, on, up there, can we get at least some increased, I don't know, police protection? It just, especially for when they're coming out of schools. Kids, when they come out of school, they just look for trouble. I mean, God bless them, they're great, but middle school kids are some of the most stubborn, hard-headed kids you ever wanna meet. And therefore, I don't know, I think that with, that anything can get them off track. And I just, if you have a presence, sometimes it's enough to deter them to not, to try to do the right thing, should I say?
Sure.
And that's another request. And one final thing was, is that there was a bit of a rezoning in, on Camonetti Lane and Johnson, on Johnson, on Johnson. And there's a family and they, they weren't able to be here tonight, but their, their home that they've lived in for years and years, for more than 50 years, has been rezoned to, from residential to commercial. And, but they still live there. So, I'm not exactly sure of...
Okay. Well, if we get with a horse and we'll get that information. I, I know...
Okay.
We, we had the one next to the fire station last week...
Okay.
That was, that was upzoned to, I think it was, was it medium density? And, and given the half acre lot, they could put 12 units on that.
Mm-hmm.
And the surrounding area, most of the surrounding area was MDR.
Okay.
But it also contained a lot of single-family homes. So...
Okay.
Maybe that might be, is it...
Part of the area.
Maybe close to the fire station?
Yes. Well, yeah, off of, yeah, off of Perazine, yes.
Okay. So, that's the only rezoning that I'm aware of, but, but we'll get the information and hopefully be able to set them straight.
All right. Thank you.
Hold on one second. Let David come up with the mic. David up front, please. And again, appreciation to our media department for being here covering this event. We are streaming it on Facebook and David's doing all the audio and making it easier for all of us to hear each other, so.
Okay. I don't mean to be a microphone hog.
That's okay.
Listen, I got a question. As county taxpayers, we're all responsible for paying back all the grants, right? It comes out of all of us. Any grants that are received...
Sorry, speak a little bit into...
Any grants that are obtained, even if it's just city development, redevelopment? As a whole county, we're all paying that back, right? That's not isolated to just the city taxpayers?
It would, my understanding, it would be the city taxpayers.
Okay. Well, how does all the redevelopment that's happening and it just, 'cause the city has borrowed from the county as far as projects within the county. How are we so hooked on redevelopment that we cannot put our first responders first? I recognize you come in on this later and the administrator. Our first responders first. And I don't understand how we can afford everything but our first responders. We have to go to the governor. They're out there risking their lives daily. I just don't understand how their last list, they're told to get to the back of the line, and we can afford everything but right now.
No, I, I agree that public safety is, is a priority and, and have been working with the, the administrator and the, and the fire department to, to get a long-term plan in place. And, and so, now that Madam Administrator's on, on board, some of that shifts more, more in her arena. But the first seven, eight months when, when we were without one, that was definitely something that we've done. I would say that the fire department has put together a, a plan and that addresses those concerns. Of course, one of the things that I pushed for was that we use some of the money that we got from OLF 8 sale to Navy Federal to, to get them some needed equipment.
Right.
I think we were able to find a, a different source of revenue for that. But I viewed that sale and the, and the proceeds from that sale as not something that needed to be divided five ways, but something that needed to go towards the needs of the county.
Right.
And, and so, I still stand by that and say that, you know, we have public works that needs equipment. We have fire department that needs equipment, that we, we don't need to be divvying it up and seeing how much I can get for my district when there are needs countywide.
And am I wrong, as far as when we obtain a grant, even for like redevelopment in District 5, am I wrong that that still cuts into the budget as far as how we can afford all the other things that we need to be affording first?
Again, it's, there are, so there are, finding out how many pots of money there are in the county. But we do set aside some money from LOST to, to be a matching grant for, for things. As I say, it's, part, part of what I see my job is, is finding that balancing act between infrastructure and services...
Right.
And then also maybe future needs.
Right.
And, and so, that's, that's exactly what it is. It's a balancing act. Of course, I would like to, to, you know, have the sidewalks on Burgess move up a year or two. But again, it's, it's finding that, you know, we'd love to fund all the, all the sidewalks, but if we did all that, then we would not fund something else. And so, again, I think it's, it's working with EC UA. It's, it's making sure that when we're doing projects, that we're, we're doing it in the, in the right way, that three months later, EC UA's not coming in behind us and tearing up a brand-new paved road and, and doing something. And, and then that costs them more. I mean, it's, so we wanna be responsible in how we spend. And, and again, not to, to keep harping on this, but, but that was one reason why I was very encouraged when I had the opportunity to talk with, with Madam Administrator when, when she was interviewing and saying, we're not gonna continue to fund things just 'cause we've always funded it. Let's, let's put the why behind it. Let's look at where we want to go. And does this fit that, that mission? Does that fit that goal? And if not, then, then we need to look at another way to do it. But we shouldn't just spend because we've always spent. And, and we need to make sure that we spend smartly and that it achieves the goals, which again, we don't have long-range plans per se for, for Escambia County. We don't have a 15-year plan. So, it's working towards that and, and making sure that what we're doing now is, is at least going towards that.
When you're planning on development and you're applying for these grants and any kind of planning, shouldn't there be a percentage that goes, that is in part of that plan that goes toward maintenance and toward those future infrastructure, anything? And the first responders. There should be percentages whenever you're developing that you know there's gonna have to be those improvements and maintenance from, from the rear.
And again, we're looking at that, especially as we continue to grow in the Beulah area and, and then I'd say the north, northwest part of, of that. There are additional services and how are we gonna afford those, that we're gonna have to spend additional money to, you know, create. We're getting ready to build a new firehouse, things like that. When we have to staff the trucks, we have to staff, get the trucks, staff the trucks, all things that we need to, to consider as, as we're doing that. You know, I mean, I know Santa Rosa just put in impact fees. That goes towards some of those services and, and doing that. Any more questions? Again, I'll, I'll be around as, as late as I need to be or as late as they'll allow me to be. Again, I wanna thank the fire department for, for coming here tonight. I told them they didn't have to sit through this. They were more than welcome to, but really, to give us the opportunity to recognize them for all their hard work. So, if we could please do that again, I'd appreciate it.[1735.23][1735.23](APPLAUSE) Thank, thank you for all you do for Escambia County and for the citizens. And as we said earlier, those, that's what we rely on when we make the call, that, that you're able to answer it. And, and so, I appreciate that. Again, thank you so much for coming out tonight, for all, for all the citizens that came out and also for all the staff that were here to help answer your questions. I appreciate it and look forward to doing another one soon. Thank you so much.[1764.66][1764.66](APPLAUSE)